This conference will now be recorded.
The Jefferson County Council order, roll call please.
Person Horn?
Aye.
Lars?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Peachy?
Here.
Fire?
Here.
Tully?
Here.
Here. And Kraus?
Here.
All here.
Thank you. At this time we'll entertain public participation. If anyone would like to address, the council may do so. Please state your name and address for the record. There's no one present in the council chambers and I don't show any other callers. So we'll close public participation and move on to an update on the COVID-19. Administrator Friday, please.
Mayor, I'm hoping we can save that till the end when Sarah can join us.
Okay. Duly noted. Move on to tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow councilpersons and residents of Jefferson, City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 94. Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for April 6, 2020 is hereby adopted. A. We had vouchers payable for April 2020 in the amounts of $467,137.29. Payroll summary for March 26, 2020 in the amount of $160,654.79. B. We had council minutes from the March 17, 2020 of the common council. C. Licenses as approved by the regulatory committee tonight. Tonight, we just had operators licenses. There were no special class B or alcoholic beverages licenses. Operators were Aaron Seif at Rock Bottom Express and Kevin Fane at Casey's General Store. I would so move.
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we're gonna do them all on a roll call vote tonight. All in favor of approval, consent agenda, please signify by saying aye as your name is called.
Horn?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye, but I abstain from the minutes.
Miller?
Aye.
Peachy?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye, and I abstain from the minutes.
Tully?
Aye.
And Kraus?
Aye.
It's unanimous with two intentions. Thank you. Just as a point of order here, we're gonna ask that you please mute your mic until you wish to speak. I'll be able to tell when your mic is unmuted. So if you would like to chime in, just unmute your mic and then we'll go in order that people ask to speak. For this next one, Vinnie, you can leave yours on. We're gonna be reading the Resolution Number 95. And then I'll ask for a second after Vinnie moves through. So Jim, just read Resolution Number 95.
City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 95. A word of bid for 2020 Riverwalk Extension Project Rebid. Whereas the City of Jefferson received one bid from contractors interested in completing the 2020 Riverwalk Extension Project. And whereas the value of the lowest bidder is Yankee General Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $316,032.25. And whereas the scope of the work includes the construction of a 220-foot-long, 12-foot-wide wooden boardwalk with concrete approaches, extending along the east bank of the Rock River between the Milwaukee Street and Racine Street bridges. And whereas monies for this project have been allocated from the Stormwater Fund and Tax Increment District Number 5 Fund. And whereas Town and Country Engineering and the City Engineer reviewed the project bid results and recommend award of the base bid to Yankee General Contractors Incorporated as the low-qualified bidder in the amount of $316,032.25. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves the Yankee General Contractors Incorporated bid for the 2020 Riverwalk Extension Project in the amount of $316,032.25. And further directs and authorizes the city administrator to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the City of Jefferson upon the review and consent of the city attorney. I would so move.
Second.
Thanks, seconded. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Please activate your mic and I'll recognize you. Paul?
Yes, this was discussed at the finance committee. It was unanimous.
Thanks, Paul. Rich?
Aye.
So, okay, we're not there yet. I just saw your mic was on.
Oh, I thought you turned it.
Sorry, this is work in progress. Vinnie, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, then we will take a roll call for approval, please.
Horn?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Peachy?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
And Kraus?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 96 to be introduced by City Administrator Friday. And I will ask for a motion from Alderman Peachy, please. Tim?
Lost audio from Tim.
Great. Can I butt in here? I can't understand anything. I can't hear it or understand it.
Tim, you sound like you're underwater.
Yep. Okay. Is that any better?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, much better.
Okay. Regarding tax increment.
You're speaking.
Regarding tax increment district number nine. The city completed a number of improvements, including the North Industrial Park, as well as extending services to the area up around the North Highway 26 interchange. We did that with general city funds, but we want to apportion those amounts back to tax increment district nine because we hope at some point in the future when that district is producing increment, it can return or repay those funds to the city's general fund. So that's why it's showing a $687,000 amount. And then the last big one that I would mention is Fund 66, our capital project fund in the amount of $568,600. And that represents borrowed money from 2018 for the City of Jefferson Police Department, Jefferson Utilities, building renovation project. We borrowed those amounts in 2018. The project was constructed in 2019. So the 2018 amount was just treated as fund balance and is carried forward into '29. But that's why it's a rather big number, 568,600. Those are just borrowed funds that we didn't spend in 2018, but we did in 2019. Be it further resolved that the above budget adjustments are funded out of the respective fund balances?
I would so move if Tim's done.
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Alderman Brandle. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all please signify in approval, signify by saying aye as Chris calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Peachy?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus? Kraus?
Sorry, I was muted. Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. This is a work in progress. We're all learning as we go.
What's that?
Thank you. Resolution Number 97, a resolution rejecting the bid for the 2020 sanitary sewer interceptor projects. City Administrator Friday, please.
Whereas the City of Jefferson Wastewater Utility advertised for bids for 2020 construction of a sewer interceptor. And whereas only one bid was received from Fisher Excavating from Freeport, Illinois. And whereas the bid received was substantially higher than the pre-bid construction estimate. And the Finance Committee has reviewed the bid and concurs with the wastewater superintendent and Town and Country Engineering Incorporated to reject the bid. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein rejects the bid for the 2020 sanitary sewer interceptor project.
I so move.
Mr. Brandle moves. Is there a second?
Second. Alderman Horn?
And that was... Sure. Who seconded? I'm sorry.
Alderman Horn.
Alderman Horn, thank you. Okay, Todd?
So like we discussed in the Finance Committee, ultimately this bid was, bid opening was right when they were closing down the state. The list of approved businesses that were going to be essential and allowed to be open was not established yet. So we expected to get two more bids on this. Town and Country had reached out to them, those bidders, to see why the bids hadn't been placed. And ultimately it was just the uncertainty of the COVID-19 and if they were going to be allowed to work. That and the substantially higher bid that we did receive. Part of that was with the COVID-19 and part of it was the southern part of this project is close to the river. And they were uncertain if they were going to have a lot of groundwater issues and de-watering. So in the meantime, we're looking at rejecting this bid. Before we rebid, we are possibly going to do a soil boring just to show where the groundwater, groundwater table is at. And then go out to rebid this probably mid-May for a June opening. And at that time, hopefully, a lot of this stuff will be cleared up. And now that the contractors also know that they are allowed to do this construction work.
Any questions of Todd? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, rejecting the bid for the sanitary sewer interceptor project at this time, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, know if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Peachy?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
And Kraus?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 98, a resolution to hire a full-time police department dispatcher. Alderman Miller, please. My bad. Tim, read it, please.
City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 98. Whereas Police Chief Pledgie has taken steps to fill a vacant position in the police department for a full-time dispatcher. And whereas the open position was publicly advertised and interviews were conducted with five potential candidates of 12 total applicants. And whereas Police Chief Pledgie is recommending that Katie Chapman be hired by the City of Jefferson to fill the vacant position. And whereas the Personnel Committee, having reviewed the qualifications of Ms. Chapman and the recommendation of Chief Pledgie, is also recommending the hire of Ms. Chapman to the common council. And whereas the Chief of Police has full-time funds allocated in his 2020 approved operating budget. And this full-time dispatcher position is to fill a recent full-time vacancy vacancy in the police department dispatching staff. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein authorizes the police chief to hire Katie Chapman at a starting wage rate of $19.74 per hour, grade five step one of the 2020 City of Jefferson Compensation Plan. And that she be given nine days of paid time off, year one of the service, of service on the City of Jefferson paid time off schedule on the first day of employment. Employment shall commence no later than Monday, April 13, 2020.
Thank you, Tim.
I would make a motion to move Resolution Number 98.
Alderman Miller's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Kraus, thank you. Chief, did you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just like to add that I did have the opportunity to speak with Alderman Miller on Friday about our applicants tonight. Katie had an excellent work history background. She's 30 years old. She works in Watertown, or she hails from Watertown. She currently works at Walgreens Distribution Center as a full case picker with some coding responsibilities. And she stood out from the other candidates. I think she's going to be an excellent addition. I was very happy to see she's been at her previous job for eight years. So hopefully we'll get some longevity here out of Katie.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone have any questions of Chief?
I do. I'm a mayor.
Okay. There are no other questions or comments?
I'm the mayor.
Jim?
Yes, a question on the pay package. We are allowing for nine days paid time at the first day of employment. If in fact something doesn't work out, you know, not willingly, but if something doesn't work out after two weeks, a month or something, this person will get nine days of paid vacation.
The way I understand it, Jim, is she's got to accrue this throughout the year, but not correct. Is that correct, him? And so, yeah, she would not be paid out at all. She separated service with us for nine days. She has to accrue it month by month through the year.
Okay, so it would be approved. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Chief?
Chief, does she have any prior dispatching experience? And then what happened with our last dispatcher? Why are we fulfilling this position now?
Our last dispatcher went to Dodge County, which was a 911 center. It was an increase in salary and a professional advancement in her opinion. So it's a 911, obviously, you know, full-time 24/7 dispatch center. So that's where Katie ended up going. None of our applicants had previous dispatching experience, Paul. She just really stood out and her background proved that out. I think she's going to be a good addition. And like they said, when I looked at her work history, I saw eight years and, you know, came recommended by my staff as well. We're hoping that we get some longevity here with her. I wish I had a crystal ball, Paul.
I know. I'm just trying to figure out because we seem to go through the, quite often, the same with the officers and whatnot. I just wish I could, like you said, look into that crystal ball and figure out how we can keep these people. I don't know if it's a matter of pay or benefits or what it is, but I wish we could find whatever the solution is.
I appreciate that. I would too. It seems like it's in this profession quite a bit, Paul, unfortunately.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the hiring. These six, I would say aye as your name is called, know if you're opposed.
Horn?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Peachy?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Tully? Okay. And Kraus?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Next Resolution Number 99, a resolution to hire a part-time patrol officer. Tim?
City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 99. Whereas Police Chief Pledgie has to fill a vacant position in the police department for a part-time patrol officer. And whereas the open part-time patrol officer position was recently vacated by a promotion. And whereas the open position was publicly advertised and interviews were conducted with five potential candidates of a total of seven applicants. And whereas Police Chief Pledgie is recommending that Nolan Went be hired by the City of Jefferson to fill the vacant position. And whereas the Personnel Committee, having reviewed the qualifications of Nolan Went and pursuant to Chief Pledgie's recommendation, the hire of Nolan Went as a part-time patrol officer for the City of Jefferson Police Department to the common council. And whereas the Chief of Police has part-time funds allocated in his 2020 approved operating budget. And that this part-time patrol officer position is to replace a current vacancy in the part-time patrol officer staff. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the Chief of Police is authorized to hire Nolan Went as a part-time patrol officer effective Tuesday, April 7, 2020, as a part-time patrol officer for the City of Jefferson Police Department. The initial rate of pay shall be $20 per hour pursuant to the 2020 City of Jefferson non-represented pay resolution.
I would move City of Jefferson Resolution Number 99.
Second. I would second. By Alderman Miller? Rediscussion?
So Nolan is 22 years old. He's from Janesville. This will be his first foray into law enforcement. He's a certified police officer from, actually, December of last year from Fox Valley Technical College. He has his associate's degree that he graduated last spring. So he's worked for Manashe PD as a reserve. He's worked for a security company as a security officer. And he's, he actually left those jobs ago for his school, which is good. Very personable young man. We really liked him in the interview. We think he's going to be really a good asset for us. He will be my third out of four budgeted part-time officers. We simply put, there are nobody else that we were comfortable with in the people that we interviewed. So we have Officer Harper who's doing stellar in his field training right now as a part-time officer. And we think Nolan's going to do really well with the right tools that we're going to be able to give him with our great field training staff. So that's why we're bringing him before you tonight.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions of Chief Pledgie? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, know if you're opposed. Alderman Horn?
Aye. Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Peachy is also an aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
And Kraus?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we'll move on to the CBDG closeout at Plymouth Street, CDBG project discussion. Tim?
Thank you, Dale. This is not an action item on tonight's agenda. I do want to let you know that we have prepared the CDBG application and all the paperwork to close out our revolving loan fund program. We haven't submitted it yet. I wanted to chat about this real briefly. Excuse me. One more time with the council because the application itself is about 60 pages. And once we submit it, I don't want to say we can't withdraw it or amend it, but it's very, very complicated to do so. So before we submit it, which may be yet this week, I just wanted to make sure that we're good. The amount of our request is approximately $715,000. We're requesting, once that money is paid to the state to close out our revolving loan fund program, that those funds come back to the city, which we would use to facilitate or fund the reconstruction of Plymouth Street. The goal in working with Bill is that we would make the request and hopefully get the money to do the project in 2020. get the money to do the project in 2021. So I suppose for Dale, Jim and Bill, um, you know, I would ask, uh, that you fellows confirm with the Water Utility, uh, Commission that, uh, they're still on board because there is a component of this project which includes replacing, uh, some section of water main. I don't remember Bill Pennell, how many feet that is. I think it's about a, a block or two worth of water main. So that has to be budgeted for in the utility commission's 2021, uh, budget. But, um, just again, um, I wanted to make sure that, uh, the mayor and our, uh, older persons are good with submitting that application to close out our program, to request the money come back and to use it to fund the reconstruction of Plymouth Street in 2021.
Anyone have any questions of Tim?
I think it's a good use of the money that's available.
Thank you, thank you, Ron. Um, I, I do too because I think it's the most advantageous way for the city to leverage, unfortunately, having to close out that RLF program because I think it's been a good beneficial program for the city, but it's also a good way of getting that money back in the, into the city to, uh, you know, do a, a real large construction project that absent these funds, you know, the city would probably have to borrow, uh, you know, almost, uh, three quarters of a million dollars to, uh, use to reconstruct a, a large length reconstruction of, uh, roadway in the city.
So if we have a consensus, you can all nod your heads.
That would be good.
All right, um, then we will conclude our meeting tonight by an update on the, uh, COVID-19 and our election procedures as we know it at this point. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim and I'd like to set up that place.
Yep, it'll be, uh, myself, uh, City Clerk, uh, Kopsi, as well as, uh, Police Chief Pledgie that kind of provide this five or 10-minute update. Um, I'm not going to, um, talk about a lot of the things that I know you understand are already happening in the city. Uh, instead I, I, I wanted to say that, um, the messaging that we hear in the media from, uh, our federal and state, uh, leaders, um, are suggesting that, uh, even though the timetable for this pandemic to end is unknown, increasingly they'll, they're talking about it being measured, uh, more by the months and not the weeks. So what that really means for us is that in, uh, the contingency planning for this event, uh, the city is planning on how to operate for a longer term in our current environment. Um, and that really means for us is being able to facilitate business continuity. You know, we want to continue, uh, to deliver services, um, uh, as best we can. Uh, it may not always happen in, uh, the most rapid fashion, but, but by and large, um, we're anticipating that we'll be able to continue to, uh, deliver services, uh, uh, over a period of months should we have to, uh, if it stretches beyond, uh, a period of several weeks. One of the, uh, most important things for us to be able to do that is our own workplace safety and, uh, the well-being of our employees. It's really, uh, important for us to be able to continue to, uh, deliver services. Um, I will tell you without getting into specifics, uh, we have had one, uh, employee test negative. Uh, and we've had two employees spending some amount of time in quarantine over the last couple of weeks. Um, what we've really been doing here, uh, is allowing a limited number of employees to work from home. Uh, that's not always feasible. We have a couple of positions where, um, you know, we are able to facilitate that. Um, most departments have begun splitting their shift of employees. So they don't have their whole workforce working together. People like, uh, Todd Clark and Bill Pennell has broken up their employees into shifts, um, minimizing the amount of overlapping time that they spend with each other to try to preserve our workforce. Should we have a larger outbreak take place in Jefferson County? Um, we have some very limited redeployment of the workforce. Uh, we have a few staff numbers that may not, uh, be doing what they were hired to do. They may be doing other jobs, uh, as some librarians are. And quite frankly, Sarah will tell you tomorrow that, um, uh, we're using, uh, a number of ci- city employees to facilitate, uh, the spring election. Um, starting this week, uh, we have mandatory temperature testing for all of our employees. It's the first thing an employee does, uh, when they report, uh, to work, uh, or the start of their shift. Um, we're starting, uh, that, uh, it's in place for some departments. To be honest, we had a hard time getting the ear digital thermometer, uh, temperature devices, but, uh, we took shipment of our, uh, uh, our last shipment, uh, today. Um, and the goal is to continue to provide services, maybe in a little different fashion, uh, and at perhaps a little different, uh, pace, but our intention is to answer the bell and, uh, uh, to continue to provide service, uh, over a period of months if, uh, need be. Uh, I would just mention to you, and I think most of you know that all the city buildings, uh, all of our city buildings, uh, are closed to the public with the exception of City Hall and the Police Department. Um, I know that you know, we have a number of programs and activities that have been suspended. Um, I just have two to add to that list that I'm not sure that you're, uh, aware of. Um, we closed city park playgrounds by order of, uh, State of Wisconsin, um, just recently. And then our municipal court has adjourned until May 7th and May 21st. So there's no municipal court that will operate the month of April. Um, one of the issues that, um, um, I wanted to chat briefly about, uh, with you and, uh, no doubt you've heard a lot about it in the media, media, is the availability of personal protective, uh, gear and equipment. And I'm going to ask Ken Pledgie just to give you a quick update on that.
So I'm part of a lot of the different state discussions that go on with the Attorney General as well. We had a governor, um, um, from the Chiefs of Police Association last week. Everybody is looking for PPEs and they can't find them. Um, in the city, um, the police department, we are, I would say we are adequately equipped with N95s, face shields. Uh, we do have some gowns, Tyvek suits. Um, the officers, I've been instructed on how to reuse their N95 masks. Um, so we, I would say that we're in fairly good shape. We're good with gloves. Um, and the thermometers, as Tim said, came in today. So that's been instituted, uh, to kind of have a, a level of more comfort, um, for folks. So, um, the, I'm part of the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, early morning, uh, Jefferson County Emergency Operations Centers meetings. And as of this morning, and you know how this is fluid, folks, but, uh, so with, um, Jefferson County has 14 confirmed cases. Uh, they've done 346 total case investigations in Jefferson County. And so that, that's, we hope that it stays down, but we know that it may not. That also includes one new case over the weekend. So, um, overall, we know it's here. We're, um, trying to protect our employees. The officers are doing very well. Um, they're wearing their masks when they're going to calls. Um, last week after we had, um, a, a conference call with the governor, one of the issues we were running into was, um, dispatch centers not sharing, DHS not sharing with dispatch centers. Um, the fact that there was, uh, somebody that may be COVID-19 positive at an address. So we're sending our EMS, police and fire to these locations and we didn't even know. So the governor did, uh, order, um, late last week that now, uh, has, uh, compelled them to do that. So I got my first information today, um, from, um, Jefferson County Health Services about, uh, any addresses in the city and right now we're good. Um, we have one that's recovered, but as you know, that can change daily. But as far as taking care of our employee base, um, we're, we're, we feel really good. Uh, the officers have been trained, um, we've got cleaning supplies all over and we've all tried to share with each other. So I'd say we're, we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other communities are.
One, one additional thing just to add, um, I think in terms of, uh, our EMS and fire department operations, um, we're generally good on, on, uh, on PPE. Um, I would say we have several weeks of inventory. Um, that's typically what we would carry. Of course, uh, if we have an outbreak, um, you know, you can go through that very quickly. So there's no question, um, you know, we will at some point have to acquire more. We're trying to get it. Um, it's really hard to get it. The supply chain in this country hasn't caught up to it and, you know, we have to face the ugly fact that a lot of this stuff is no longer made in this country. So you're relying on, uh, imported sources, which I think, uh, probably complicate, um, um, being able to replace it, uh, in quick fashion. Uh, generally speaking, I think most department like Bill's, uh, has protective clothing. We have secured, uh, additional masks, uh, we were able just to do that today. We will make those available to employees if they, uh, voluntarily want to wear those. And that would be consistent with, uh, CDC's, uh, guidelines that were issued Friday evening. So, um, um, I guess between, um, having good inventories and, uh, and scrounging, uh, you know, we've been able to put ourselves in a, in a, in a pretty good position, uh, uh, in, uh, in current time. So the next thing I wanted to do and, and this is really a fluid situation is ask Sarah, who is working tonight, uh, just to give you a quick update on tomorrow's spring election.
Thank you, Tim. Um, so as of 5:23 tonight, the Wisconsin Supreme Court ruled that we will have an election tomorrow. Um, with tonight, we're trying to get all of our absentees and everything in a row. We have over 1,400 absentees that have come in. Um, so the last three weeks have been pretty hectic in the clerk's office. Um, this election, we normally have about 2,500 voters. So I do expect about a thousand to 1,500 people coming through our doors tomorrow. So we've taken lots of precautions, um, to ensure that our staff and the public is safe for the election tomorrow that will happen as of now. So we'll be back here in less than eight hours to open the doors and get this election behind us.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, Ken is going to, uh, just spend a few minutes, uh, uh, talking about, uh, the governor's safer at home order, in particular with, uh, business compliance for those businesses, uh, that have been forced to close.
So, um, you should be proud of your businesses in this community. Um, people have really stepped up. This is really difficult on, um, especially some of our small businesses. Um, I've been extremely proud. We have had just a couple of minor complaints. We are, we're treating it as, um, educational, just, uh, speaking with people. Um, we, we already know they're hurting. So, but overall, um, I would tell you that our business isn't checking. Um, our essential businesses are functioning. Um, our non-essential businesses, um, have, um, voluntarily closed. So I'm, I'm, it's, that's really, I've heard a lot of, um, things from around the state now that that's not what the case is with some communities, but we've been really good here in Jefferson. So, um, I'm really proud, like I say, of our Chamber of Commerce has been a great, um, conduit for information. The City Hall, our staff website, our Facebooks, we're doing the same thing on, we're trying to do our updates too to citizens on our, our, um, News Upstate's weekly releases so people have current information. So, but, uh, overall, um, we're, we're doing really well with the safer at home. And we know people are, we know that it's really tough, um, not being able to go socialize normally, how do you do? So, but, um, we've been, we've been very lucky.
Thank you, Ken. Um, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, City Engineer Bill Pennell, uh, who wants to make some remarks about, um, some of his DPW programs.
Thanks, Tim. I just wanted to mention to people so that they're aware, uh, with the safe at home. A lot of people are doing yard work, uh, much more than normal. So, uh, for that reason, the compost site in the City of Jefferson is being left open continuously. Um, it's been open for about a week, um, and we are leaving it open continuously until the 19th. Um, depending on, um, how this, um, continues, we will decide at that time whether or not we want to, um, continue with that, uh, being open after the 19th. But for the time being, it's left open continuously until the 19th. There may be some disruptions of an hour or two from now and then if somebody comes up there. Uh, because of the amount of people that are using it, we are up there almost on a daily basis or every other day pushing up piles. So people are certainly taking advantage of that. Um, and then secondly, I just wanted to mention that, uh, with the, um, early winter we got last year, we had a lot of people with leaves left. Uh, so the DPW is doing a leaf pickup, uh, next week. That will be the 13th through the 17th. We're doing one pass through the city and one pass only. Uh, so any residents that want leaves picked up need to have them out there by 7:00 AM on Monday, the 13th. Uh, once we go through, we're not going to come back, but again, the compost site will be open for people that are able to take leaves up themselves. Thanks.
And, uh, finally, I, I, I think I just wanted to conclude, uh, with, uh, what I think the next phase of, of our planning really will be. Um, as I said before, um, we're going to continue our, uh, business operations, uh, in anything but a business as normal manner because it's not normal. Um, but we're going to continue to provide services as best we can. Uh, one thing I really expect to happen, uh, the longer this event goes on, uh, I really think you'll see, uh, departments and department managers becoming very entrepreneurial, uh, really thinking about alternative methods to deliver services. So what does that mean? Um, one example would be, I would expect that the library, um, would really focus, for instance, on delivering more virtual services. They may have virtual book clubs. They may have virtual children's reading where people just have to buy video link, um, access a system and, uh, there's some ongoing program. We're really thinking about more things like that. But, um, you know, I really think that you may see, as I said, the longer this goes on, some different service alternatives. Um, and then finally, I, I wanted to tell you that the longer this goes on, there's certainly a, a financial implication on local governments. The city will hardly be alone. You know, we're okay, we've set aside money, you know, to deal with emergencies. Typically it's flooding. Well, this year it happens to be dealing with this pandemic. Um, but what I'm really talking about, uh, the longer the event, the more impact on some of our revenue sources that I would think particularly on revenue we would derive from or tying to private business operations, whether it's reduced licensing, reduced building permit revenue, you know, we need to try to figure out what that all means. So, um, if we have to make adjustments on how we operate financially, um, we can do so. So we're going to be focusing on certainly the election tomorrow, but once that slides behind us, you know, we're going to increasingly be looking at, um, determining the financial impacts of this. And that's a little spotty because no one really knows at this point in time how long that will continue. But, um, I want to assure you that, um, um, we have some really good experienced department managers that, uh, are leading the city. And I know Ken is kind of the co-emergency government person, uh, sharing those duties with me. And, uh, he's done a great job and, you know, I think the community is lucky to have him. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. And, uh, if not, um, I'll sign off and say good night.
Any questions of Tim?
Mayor, I had one question. Uh, I don't know who's going to answer this, but-
I don't know who's gonna answer this, but one of the questions I've been getting are, if you wanna know if they're allowed to have fires. Normally, they would normally have a fire about this time. Are we allowing that to happen?
Ken, do you wanna take that?
Right now, Rich, most communities are not allowing for fire burning. I saw a lot of it when I drove through the county this past weekend. You know, the statewide ban was put off by the DNR. Incorporated areas are a little bit of a different thing. I have not heard a fire chief say that fires are allowed. In fact, if I'm, I don't believe I'm incorrect that he does not want fires in the city.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Just one question about the election. Is there an extended period for the absentee ballots to be received? You hear about that a lot.
Yep, they did extend it till April 13th, next Monday. So a week after they're giving you to get the ballots back.
Okay. Thank you.
So then Sarah, technically, there are no results tomorrow because you can still receive absentee ballots.
That's correct. Yep.
So are things not gonna be published?
I don't believe so, not until after the 13th.
Okay.
Actually, Paul, the judge's order is very specific about that, that no results are to be disclosed until after the 13th. I bring it's 4 o'clock. That's the deadline.
That's correct.
Absentee ballots.
Okay. And then I have one question for Chief yet. Chief, you still there?
I have, yeah. I turned it up so I can hear you.
Okay. My only question, and this is difficult to enforce, I get that, but if we're closing the parks, I mean, you're still gonna have people going to the parks. Are you guys just, officers just tell them, hey, you know, be careful and all this good stuff?
We are, Paul. But you know, the officers, they know people are going stir crazy in their homes and they're gonna get out with this nice weather, you know, to go out for a stroll and go through one of our parks. If they go on playground equipment, the officers are just gonna educate and say, hey, you know, there's an order right now. Cindy has put up signs, but we totally get it. We, you know, people, I saw a lot of people out walking and biking and doing healthy things. And we sure, you know, with the parks, I think that's a good thing for folks to get out of the house because a lot of people are getting, going stir crazy just being stuck inside. So we're using a very wide berth of discretion.
Okay.
And just to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's, the parks are open. It's the playground equipment that's not open to the public, correct?
That, yes.
Okay.
And going back to Rich's point there, we do not allow by ordinance open fires in the city, but you can have an outdoor fire pit as long as it's enclosed in the embers, if it's got a screen on it.
Right, and if it's like a grill too.
Or a grill, yeah. So really, nothing's changed. We don't have any particular burn concerns right now.
We have.
Anything, it's pretty wet, but.
Right. I have no concerns whatsoever in the city. So unless it gets crazy big.
Anyone else? Well, if not, I just wanna thank you all. I think you've done a terrific job. I appreciate everybody's flexibility and willing to learn. I wanna echo what Tim said before about how impressed and proud I am of our city staff. Everyone has really stepped up, and you're gonna see that in full force tomorrow. I wanna say thank Sarah and your whole crew, and certainly Tim and all the department heads for their cooperation. And I think we are, I take pride in working for Jefferson and serving here because I believe that we are a leader in municipalities on how to deal with this the best we can and moving forward. So thank you all, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Check it.
Pete, Paul, and Rich? Okay, turn your mics on. I'm gonna try this on a voice vote. All in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, good night. Thank you. Thanks again. Appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you next time.
Be careful tomorrow, Sarah.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Thank you.